All right. Call to Order, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Gene, could you please take role?
Here.
Here.
I'm here.
Peter Boynton.
Aye.
Gemma Wilkins.
Yes.
And we're waiting on John Simons.
Okay, let's start with four nineteen, four thirty-five Andover Street. Follow-up regarding traffic monitoring report.
All right, so as you may recall, they presented their Starbucks traffic utilization study a few weeks ago. So the March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one decision conditioned a lane monitoring study for the Starbucks. They came in and presented that. The study period was October twelfth and the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. There were a couple of follow-up questions based on that presentation. And the first of which was whether there were any promotions run during that observation period. And the response was there were not. The second question was whether the staff was added or were other measures implemented during peak hours when special promotions are offered. And the answer was that labor is added for promotions and launch periods based on historical data to meet customer demand. It's also true for peak business times.
Okay.
So they do turn in another utilization study a year from now.
That's it. And I liked kind of that format of getting the report, asking questions, getting follow-up. I think that's a helpful model going forward. Okay, Master Planning Implementation Committee by Annual Progress Report.
I'm gonna touch on that. So, I mean, I'm not gonna go through the whole memo, but a lot of the, as we go through the Master Plan Implementation Committee review, we look at land use and other objectives as a part of the master plan implementation. And a lot of the land use objectives, we've been kind of narrowing in on a lot of the MBTA Communities Act and how that would fit within the master plan on a high level. We're also talking about how ADUs fit within the master plan. And there was a recent survey they went out, they got really good response rate on ADUs. In addition, towards the end, there was a grant that was awarded to the town for some infrastructure for sidewalks and walkability around Butcher Boy and Bad Maggie's in the order of about one point two four million, which is pretty compelling. So it's gonna be really nice for hitting the transportation objective. And at the conclusion of the memo, you know, one of the big questions that came out of it was whether or not us as the planning board would like the Master Plan Implementation Committee to evaluate and score how the MBTA Communities Act and what we're planning to look at overlays on how that would fit within the master plan. So, kicking up to the, I guess, discussion point there. Do we want Master Plan Implementation Committee to review and score?
Okay, so some of you may remember for when we had the zoning by law proposal for Royal Crest, the Master Plan Implementation Committee basically went through what that would entail and how that hits on various master plan points. They didn't say anything about like, is this good, is this bad, should we do it? But just whether or not it hits certain master plan points. And I think they spoke for about a minute or so at a town meeting about that. Seems to make sense here. I mean, it certainly will hit some parts of the master plan in terms of housing and housing production and things along those lines. So it seems to make sense to me. Anybody else have opinions, thoughts?
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, sure, sounds good, John.
Great.
Why don't you take that back and recommend that they do that? Very good.
Just to know John Simons arrived at seven oh five.
Fantastic. The record is noted.
My apologies.
Okay, so we've, John, we did four nineteen, four thirty-five Andover Street. Just getting the follow-up to some questions. And now we did the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Why don't we do the four hundred Great Pond Road Steering Committee update? And then we'll go to the new public hearing.
Gene, can you do the brief PowerPoints?
Yes.
So we met with the Select Board and gave a summary of what the four hundred Great Pond Road Committee had determined, and our consultant was there. You can see listed on the slide next. This lists the committee members. And I could probably read this better if I opened it. So the...
I blew it up.
That's funny, I have a different, oh no, there it is. Rich Valencourt, John Simons, Norma Lockman, John Weir, Jerry Brecher, Galermo Vincennes, Gene Enright, Stephen Foster, myself, Ron Rudis, and Jim Stamford were the members. And then we reviewed with the Select Board the five decision-making principles that the committee had come up with. And number one was protect the water supply, two, open space, three, respect appropriate levels of historic preservation, and four, provide recreational opportunities as feasible given imperative number one. And number five, fiscal responsibility for both capital and operating. Next. So our consultant went back and looked at the history. And you can see here, the sequence of the property, upper left, number one, is the pavilion when it was first built in the late eighteen hundreds. And it really was quite different than what we have today. It was a covered open porch on three sides of the structure. And in the center was an open sitting room with a stairwell to a second-floor balcony, but there were no living spaces. And if you look very carefully in number one, on the lakeside, you can see what looks like a garage door opening. That was a garage door opening. It was literally built as a boathouse for boats that would be paddled inside, tied up. And then when the family was there, they could paddle a boat out. Number two, in the early nineteen hundreds, the family added living spaces to the side. And then number three was probably the most dramatic change, although number two was as well. But with number three, they added second-story living quarters and enclosed the first-floor porches. And that second story really impacted the architecture of the structure. It was essentially a shed roof and did not respect the architecture. And then we ended up with number four, which added some bulkheads, concrete walls to the outside. And the opening to the basement was sealed up, however, was not leak-proof. So the basement frequently flooded. Next slide. So using the five principles, we came up with four alternatives. Retain the entire structure, number one, that required quite a bit of work, taking much of it apart in order to make it usable. It was really, it is in very poor condition. And if it were anticipated to be some sort of town public use, then there had to be extensive ADA modifications. Number two was converted back to a three-season pavilion to mimic the original structure and with minimal facilities. Number three is removal. The foundation would remain but be filled in. And then number four was adding a private house to a small piece of the property away from the water and away from the conservation zone. We explored that option, and that could be done as part of number one, two, or three. So here's the costs. The bottom line is on the bottom line. You can see restore and reuse, seven and a half million. The three-season pavilion is two point nine. Removal is one point nine. And then all the way on the right, that base cost is that no matter what option we chose, those costs were fixed costs. And really, the lesson learned there is anytime you're doing something along the shoreline of surface drinking water supply, if the object is to protect the drinking water supply, it's very expensive. And then we had a matrix here showing the principles against the alternatives. So, you know, which of the four alternatives perform best for protecting the water supply and so forth through all of those. And at the end, the recommendation was to go with option three, which is removal. And that was the total cost of one point nine. John, you were there, and Gene, you were there. Other things to add?
I would just say option three, but also a wait-and-see type...
Oh, yes.
...conclusion in that maybe the three-season pavilion is appropriate in time or maybe just public access for picnics, things like that.
So I don't think we have a map of the whole site here, do we? I don't think we do, but the wait-and-see is that...
Number four, I would say, Peter.
Yeah, yeah. The wait-and-see was that we proceed with the removal, but at another point in time, there might be funds available where a three-season pavilion could be added. That if we do number three, it doesn't preclude that. And there were also some minimal site improvements that could also be added as a wait-and-see. Probably the primary one would be on that number four, not related to the new private house, but on the upper-left part of the property. When you first enter off Great Pond Road, there is some space along the side of the driveway where perhaps a dozen angled parking spots could be added so that you could have more visitation on the site. John, other comments?
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that I will say is that I think the consultant did a very good, a very thorough job.
Extraordinary.
And as a committee, we spent an enormous amount of time. I think initially, we were shocked at the costs. I mean, I think the way we were leaning in the beginning was a little bit different than the way it turned out. And, you know, even the cost of the removal was pretty high. But the fundamental problem is that this house is literally right on the lake.
It's in the lake.
Yeah, it's in the lake. And order to remove it is far more expensive than if it had been a hundred feet away or something like that. And I think that's, in the end, we think we've come up with a solution that matches the five objectives. It protects the town's interest and gives us some flexibility for the future.
We considered the possibility of relocating the original structure. We had someone speak to the committee who's moved the house. But being that it's in the lake, it's extraordinarily difficult. And the historic value of the house really was compromised with the owner's additions, especially the shed roof. And so there'd have to be substantial deconstruction in order to retain that original historic architectural value. Very, very expensive. And I would also say that the committee meetings were very vigorous. We had a lot of very good discussion with very different viewpoints. And at the end, it was a unanimous recommendation. I was actually a little surprised by that because there were so many differing viewpoints through the process.
No, I was gonna ask, is this gonna be subjected to demolition delay then?
Yes, I believe that's the case, one here, yeah.
And then the second question is, so obviously, there's, there was the original intent that, or how it's constructed right now is that boats can go under the house. I'm imagining, is there gonna be fill, like fill in the current foundation?
Fill in the foundation. We had very vigorous discussion on removing the foundation, restoring natural shoreline, which it turned out would be very expensive and problematic because of the slope of the land with whatever's on the land continuing to drain down into the drinking water supply. And the foundation would also have some reinforcement and work done before it was filled in order to ensure that this is not a five- or ten-year project, but a multi-decade, you know, being able to withstand. And another part of the wait-and-see is if the town had an opportunity to put some type of a deck over the foundation at another point in time, that would still be viable.
So who retains control over this parcel to make sure that, to just keep up to date on these things? I mean, town-owned now, right? Is it DPW? Who maintains the parcel going forward and, you know, decides on? Because I could see at some point, you know, a CPA application, you know, if something came about, you know, that you could use monies for. But I just don't know who's gonna keep the greens and make sure that, you know, the foundation, that the work is done and maintained and stuff like that.
Yeah, it'll fall under DPW, whether they contract out a third party or do it themselves. But we talked about, he's really only intended to mow it maybe twice a year. It's just gonna let the hay grow. But once it becomes a use, it'll take more maintenance.
There's also a separate garage structure that's not shown in these diagrams. I think it was a three-car garage structure on a cement slab. It's quite a bit more recent than the rest of the structure. And that was part of the committee discussion. And when the removal option envisions that would all be removed, although the town may want to retain the garage for some small additional time for some storage while they're waiting for other storage facilities elsewhere in town.
Well, the diagrams of the change in the house are very interesting. Okay, very good. All right, thank you. All right, let's do new public hearing, three fifty Winthrop Avenue, DSM Realty, Inc., application for site plan review, special permit modification under section one ninety-five, eight point one seven. Revisions to approved site plans in one ninety-five, ten point seven, special permits at the North Andover zoning bylaw to perform both building and site improvements to the North Andover Mall. The redevelopment program consists of renovating these existing Kohl's tenant space to accommodate the relocation of Market Basket. Vacated Market Basket tenant space will be renovated to accommodate Kohl's and approximately seventeen thousand six hundred square feet specialty retail shops. Additional improvements include parking lot upgrades, improved traffic circulation, increased landscape area upgrades, existing stormwater and site lighting improvements. The property is located in the B three, B four, and R four zoning districts.
Hello? Yes, good evening. For the record, my name is Brian Dundon. I am a site civil engineer with RJ O'Connell and Associates. I have with me tonight Mr. Jim Lamp, who was from LT Development, the owner's representative. In addition to Mr. Lamp, I have Mr. Rob Nagy from VHB, a traffic engineering consultant, and his colleague, Mr. Eric Bederick, as our landscape architect, who will be doing presentations tonight.
Before you get started, Gene, is there any introduction that we need?
I don't think you necessarily need it, but it's important to know that they are seeking both a site plan review special permit as well as a variance-to-be landscape plan and parking reduction.
Okay, and that's a waiver or a...
It's worded both ways, so I put it in as a special permit. So it'll be a special permit to modify landscaping requirements and a special permit to reduce parking. They already have one, but they're just going to further reduce it, so.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you. If Gene can show the next slide with the existing condition, thank you. So the site in question is a parcel land, it's about forty-one point eight acres in area that is currently developed. It is located with a property address of three hundred and fifty Winthrop Ave. The site currently operates as a retail shopping center with a thousand eleven parking spaces. The site has two access points. The south end of the property, the curb cut operates as a full-access curb cut under a traffic signal control. And then at the northern end of the property, it is an exit-only driveway onto Winthrop Ave. The site is also located within the one-hundred-year flood zone as depicted on the flood insurance rate maps for the town of North Andover. And essentially, the flood zone is ninety percent of the front parking lot areas. The buildings are located outside those, outside the flood zone area. Wetland resource areas are located on the site as well. Basically, on the north side of the site is predominantly wet. Wetland areas, conversely, on the south end of the site is also wet. There is also a perennial stream that is located along the property frontage of Winthrop Ave, which flows in a northerly direction underneath the two access drives with its discharge point being to the Shawshene River at the northwest corner of the property. I should mention, too, that the site is also located within three zoning districts. Majority of the site is located within the business three zoning district. This encompasses the developed portion of the site. So the buildings and parking lot areas, access points to the property, are all located within the business three zoning district. The south quarter of the property is located within the business four zoning district, which is currently undeveloped. And then along the easterly property line adjacent to the rare property lines of the residential properties along Waverly Road is the residential four zoning district. Should be noted that on our property, that is undeveloped property currently and will remain in the future. The redevelopment program, as alluded to, consists of the following. Kohl's currently occupies the largest tenant on the property. And their lease is coming up in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. As part of their lease negotiations with the ownership, property ownership, they have expressed a desire to downsize. Conversely, Market Basket is looking to increase their presence on the property. So what has come together is that at the end of the Kohl's lease, which would be the spring of this year, Kohl's with Vacated Store, Market Basket would come in and renovate their tenant space and move into it. Once Market Basket fully moved into their new space, the vacated Market Basket space would be renovated to accommodate a forty-one thousand square foot Kohl's building and seventeen thousand six hundred square feet of additional small store specialty retail shops. The renovation of the existing Market Basket space will also provide an opportunity to reduce the building footprint by nine thousand square feet. So essentially, the front bumpout along the existing market space is going to be removed, and the access drive will be pushed back to increase the parking space count. Upon completion of the renovation, the building renovation, there is also a number of site improvements that are planned as well. Those site improvements consist of a reconfiguring of the parking lot layout by integrating in landscaped island end caps at the beginning in the ends of the parking rows, as well as incorporating in longitudinal landscaped islands to facilitate and streamline traffic flow throughout the parking lot area. In addition, we have taken a look at upgrading and enhancing the access drive at the signalized intersection to, for the purpose of trying to facilitate traffic flow more easily than what's currently being experienced out there today. In addition to that, nine hundred and nine parking spaces will be provided. We have also taken this opportunity to incorporate into the design of the improvements pedestrian connectivity from Winthrop Ave to the shopping center storefronts. This will occur in two locations. On the southern end of the property where the signalized intersection is, there is a portion of the sidewalk within one fourteen that stubs onto the property. We are proposing to extend the sidewalk up that southerly driveway with a connection point being at front of Laundie's supermarket sub shop. A second sidewalk is planned on the exit, on the south side of the exit-only driveway. It'll extend down, the driveway will cross over the perimeter access road, and then will be installed or run along the longitudinal landscaped island with a connection right at the midpoint between Kohl's, the new Kohl's location and the new Market Basket location. Upon the completion of these improvements to the parking facilities, there will be an overall net reduction of about fifty-five thousand square feet of impervious surface area on site as opposed to the existing condition. So over an acre, a little more than an acre of paved area under the current condition is being removed from the project and converted to landscaped open space in the terms of either interior parking lot landscaping or increased buffers along the perennial stream adjacent to Winthrop Ave. We are also proposing upgrades to our stormwater management on the site. The stormwater management system has been designed to meet the design objectives for redevelopment sites and meet the design objectives of both the Mast EP stormwater regulations and the town of North Andover's stormwater requirements as well. We are also upgrading lighting on the properties. There'll be new energy-efficient LED site lighting installed within the parking lot. They have been designed to be DocSky compliant. Everything will be directed, light shields will be directed down, and there will be no light spillage onto abutting properties. And we also were able, as I mentioned, we are also located within the flood zone. And as a result of that, we have massaged the grading within the front parking area to provide additional flood story capacity within the front parking lot area as well. In addition to additional stormwater upgrades, as I mentioned, currently today, the main parking lot, essentially what happens is, if you're familiar with the property, from the tenant storefronts to Winthrop Ave, stormwater is just, she flows across the entire length of the parking lot, picks up pollutants, and is directly discharged into the perennial stream, which eventually outlets into the Shawshene River. The enhancements that we're proposing alleviate that. So our goals for improving stormwater quality and quantity on site is the following. We are treating the first inch of stormwater runoff that will become on the site. And this will be treated to remove pollutants prior to its discharge point still being maintained with Shawshene River. How that is being done is stormwater, by alleviating pulling the pavement area back away from the perennial stream, we were able to create a grass-channeled swale which will intercept the first inch of rainfall runoff, direct it to a sediment bay, which will allow stormwater pollutants to settle out, which will then outlet into a wet basin for additional pollutant removals prior to its discharge to the perennial stream and eventually to the Shawshene River. This BMP treatment train essentially is being integrated into the parking lot that is on the south end of that exit driveway. Stormwater runoff from the parking lot on the north end of the exit driveway is being collected in some deep-sump catch basins, which will direct rainfall runoff to a sediment four bay and then eventually into a wet basin. And then it'll outlet into the existing bio-retention basin that was installed as part of work associated with the culverts that were recently installed underneath the two access drive points. So from a stormwater perspective, those are kind of the major upgrades. Additional improvements to the system is that we are proposing no new stormwater discharge points. We are reusing the existing points that exist on site. We are reducing our peak flows that are generated on site as compared to the existing condition. And this is basically done by the reduction of impervious surface area of approximately fifty-five thousand square feet. Conversely, we are increasing our groundwater recharge opportunities by converting pavement area to landscaped area. It allows additional water to infiltrate and replenish the groundwater table. We are also prepared, as part of our package, is a construction pollution prevention plan. There'll be more than an acre of land disturbance. And as a result of that, we've prepared a construction pollution prevention plan that outlines the contractor's obligations to manage and control stormwater runoff during construction-related activities. We have also taken the opportunity in our submission to update the operation and maintenance plan that's currently in place. I was in front of this board back in two nineteen as part of some ADA enhancement work that was done along the storefronts. We updated or prepared and submitted an operation and maintenance plan that was approved by the board. We have taken that document and updated it to incorporate in the new BMPs that are gonna be integrated into the stormwater management system, which outlines the owner's obligations for inspections and maintenance requirements should this project be approved. There'll be no stormwater illicit discharges generated from the site. There'll be no stormwater illicit discharge, discharges generated from the site. It's all groundwater and stormwater runoff discharge points. And as I mentioned before, we have increased the flood storage capacity on, on the property. What I would like to do now is just take this opportunity to introduce Eric from VHB and he will go through the landscape enhancements that are being planned for the property and that'll be followed by Rob Nagy from VHB who will discuss the traffic portions, then I'll close by outlining the, the list of permits that we're seeking approvals for. Question?
Before you pause, I had a question.
Sure.
Relating to stormwater. You described your plan to upgrade your stormwater system. Does that take into account the changes that Mass DOT has recently proposed with their Route 114 upgrades where they are changing the way stormwater that comes down that slope from Merrimack College is stored on the same side of 114 as your property and just a short distance up 114? There's new stormwater storage there planned by Mass DOT and is your plan taking that into account? Does that new storage plan from Mass DOT impact your property with that, with that runoff?
It, it, it would, it should not. We're totally independent, and, and independent with, of that.
I mean, what, where the stormwater's going into that Mass DOT stormwater area, I agree, is separate from your property, but the reason I'm asking is I'm wondering where it goes from that point downhill towards your property.
Okay. I am not prepared tonight to answer that question. I can, I can.
Could you, could you get back to us on that?
Sure.
Jim Lamp, I'm a professional engineer with LT Development, representing Market Basket. We just got the notification from DOT on that. It's in the upland area just south of the signalized intersection. It's going to treat the water from the intersection that they're, they're proposing to work on and they're going to discharge into the wetlands, which is that dark green area on the south side of the plaza or the right side as you're looking at it. If anything, it's going to reduce flows, but it, it won't have any effect on, on anything that's being proposed here. And there's, there's still discussions and negotiations because it's a taking and I assume that that's going to take place over the next year or so.
I believe it discharges, where it discharges today, they're just redirecting it so that it doesn't follow that same, there was a drain that honestly they weren't even aware of.
Right, yeah.
And the culverts that we placed in over the last three or four years, five years are oversized, so, you know, even if there is an increase, which we don't anticipate, it'd probably be a reduction.
Just want to make sure you're aware of it and have taken it into account.
Absolutely.
Left hand, right hand?
Yeah, thank you.
English metric. Let's land successfully on Mars.
All right. Good evening. I'm Eric Benarik. I'm a landscape architect with VHB. I'm also designing the Merrimack College site as well, so you might be familiar with my face, but nice to be back in front of you and here to present the landscape plan and, and quite a robust landscape plan to say the least. As you can see here, there's four central landscape strips that bypass through the parking lots. Those parking strips are all 20 feet wide and as Brian mentioned, the third one from, or the second one from the left has the pedestrian pathway that cuts through that particular planting strip. So there's plants on each side of that walkway. Again, they're 20 feet wide. They have a really nice mixture of evergreen shrubs, inkberry, red twig dogwood are your primary plants that are like structural plants that are within those parking lots, providing screening between all the parking. And then you have a significant amount of ornamental grasses and perennial. So you have this nice mixed diversity of plant material in those islands, creating all year round interest between color, grasses, structural plants for, for the wintertime as well. And they're all native for the most part. I'll say about 90, 95% of the plants are native here as Market Basket has done in the past. They've done this significant amount of plantings within their parking lots on other sites as well. So a lot of these plants have been proven to be extremely durable. They've actually gone through other landscape architects as well. We have a whole mixture of shade trees here, approximately 136 shade trees, a nice diverse mixture of all native shade trees from birch trees to tupelo, to oak trees, red maple and a variation of service berry as well. So again, a really nice durable mixture of shade trees. And then on the end islands, again, accentuating the different access drives, again, providing different types of shade trees theirs as well. And on your end islands, we're looking at different types of lower perennial ornamental grasses, keeping site distance in mind as cars travel through the parking lot, which is extremely important. Again, all durable plant material. There is irrigation proposed for this drip irrigation, which is nice about this from a sustainability standpoint. Once these plants do get watered in over several years, they'll just continue to grow and they'll do, and they'll thrive. The idea is to be able to cut down the water after say three years and have minimal amount of water use on site. So those are the parking areas. And then looking at, we'll kind of zoom into two other areas, which are the stormwater features Brian mentioned over the north side of the site and then the main entrance. But just to quickly point out here with the plant list, you can see here we have about 136 shade trees. We have over 800 ornamental grasses, oh, I'm sorry, shrubs. We have over 2,000 ornamental grasses on site. We have over 8,000 perennial on this particular site. So this is not your ordinary retail site. This is quite robust. It's a really nice brand for Market Basket and also a nice experience for, for visitors. As we look at the main entry, again, a robust planting, I won't go into the details, but again, really trying to create a nice focus to the entrance, framing the entrance with inkberry, gray dogwood, getting again, those structural plants on each edge, right and left sides of the, the entranceway, creating a little bit of screening to the right side of the property and then creating some structural plants to the center median strip and again, accentuating with a nice mixture of perennial bringing year round color interest along with winter, winter interest as well. The center island, we do have some oak, some pillar oak trees to stay very narrow, want to keep, you know, fire access in mind, again, site distances as well, but getting some vertical structural vegetation within the, the main entrance. Again, creating a little bit more of a green, or should I say a lot more enhanced green welcoming to the site. And again, some service berry on each side, which flower white in the spring, again, native as well. As we focus in on some of the, this is one particular island here, you could just see a variation of ornamental grasses, perennial. And one thing to point out here, we do have the main central walkway going through this particular island. There are a little bit less structural plants in here, again, the inkberry, gray dogwood. We focused more on the ornamental grasses and perennial, a little bit smaller. We didn't want to overgrow the walkway and we also wanted to be sensitive to site distances as pedestrians are traveling down through this quarter and to be able to see cars, cars be able to see them as they travel through the walkway.
I have a question about the diagram center top, scroll down just a little Gene. What's BN? It, it looks like it's.
That's birch, birch trees.
That's a birch tree? It's like a wall.
Oh, it is, it is a little, yeah, it is a little washed. I did notice that. Yes, so, so river birch tree, multiple stems, really nice durable.
I got that. I just didn't know what the wall was.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, as Brian mentioned, the stormwater features, we're accentuating with really nice masses of a whole mixture of native plant materials. Again, some gray dogwood, inkberry, we have cletheren here as well, again, birch trees, service berry, again, in a really nice mixture to create a nice little wildlife habitat, habitat in this particular area and accentuate those stormwater features. And as you can see here, the plant materials. That's a quick summary of the landscaping if you have any questions.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
So thank you. My name is Rob Nagy. I'm a professional engineer with VHB focusing on traffic and parking out here. I think Brian and Eric stole a little bit of my thunder, sort of talking a little bit about the pedestrian connections and the changes to the parking lot here. What I want to do is I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the traffic impacts, which are actually negligible. We're really actually reducing the square footage of this, the building square footage out here, which would have a corresponding minor decrease in potential traffic generation at the site. Not something that I would say is going to be noticeable, six to 37 if you, you know, peak hour trips, about 300 less trips on the, on the weekends as you, as you look at the site and you compare it to standard ITE Institute of Transportation Engineering estimates for a shopping center of this type. Really where the value and the benefit of this project from a transportation and accessibility perspective comes is the improved access options for the site. Right now it's very vehicular central, centralized. You have to really drive a car here or walk in, in the, in the driveways to get into the site. This, this redevelopment provides opportunities to provide pedestrian connections off of the main road into the site that are safe, that are on sidewalks and then well marked. I think you've seen through the plans that have been presented today, those options don't exist. If you're walking through the site, you're walking in a drive aisle most likely or in a driveway aisle. The new upgrades to this really will provide opportunities for folks to stay off of those roadways and be focused on to, you know, more safer, more traditional walkways coming into and out of the site. Additionally, the existing layout of the driveway, particularly at the signalized intersection is, you know, is getting upgraded as part of this as well. Today you have about two cars of storage, maybe three cars of storage at that signal before you start to spill back into the site and have different people coming from different locations. With these modifications, you're looking at about a six or seven car queue length of, of storage getting into it. And we've cleaned up a little bit of the site, excuse me, I'll use the. We've, we've cleaned up the entrance a little bit here so that you actually have only two ways of coming into that signal as you're leaving the site. One is obviously through the main aisle that sort of runs parallel to the building frontage and then the other is coming from the side, which will be probably less used by, by most folks as they want to park in front of the main, the main use here, which would likely be the, the Market Basket.
So I, I find that that side exit to the signalized intersection to be the most troublesome today. So I don't know if, because what happens is that, so that's usually cars that are going either to Kohl's or to Laundies or to the Indian place or some of the, the retail shops there. And those cars get to that stop and if there's, if it's at a red light, then there are cars backed up and kind of around and then nobody knows when to go or where. It might even be better just to kind of get rid of that and just force everyone just to come back around. I, I, I'm not sure, but that is definitely the most problematic location that I see going there.
Understood. I think over time, as people get more familiar with the site, these are the types of sites with the supermarket and the, the uses on it, people will become much more familiar with where they should be going as they leave the site. I don't disagree with you on, on your point there. We do need to be cognizant of truck access, being able to make its way in and out, particularly at that location. So providing that break there is going to be important in the long-term viability of this. I do think the folks, as they start to wait there, are going to be stopped waiting for traffic as it enters the site and exits the site. And they may learn over time that that's probably not the preferred way of doing it. Again, what's out there today is, I, I will term it sort of wide open. There are no end caps to any of these parking aisles. You can, you know, as, as the parking accumulates close to the buildings, the further away you get, the more often, more opportunity you have to cross the parking aisles and just kind of zip your way diagonally out into the, to the ring road portion of it. I think with the new, with the new design, that's going to be curtailed a lot because you're now going to have physical structures that will prevent people from driving over them and that you're going to be funneled down either to the front of the store or to the rear when you're parking in, in the main portion of the site, in the centralized portion of the site. So I, I do see your point. I just think over time, people will become more familiar with that.
With the new, with the kind of the walkways and the end caps, is there any change to snow removal and storage? Because a lot of times you have those, the, the big vehicles that kind of hang out in the very middle and kind of push stuff towards the end. I don't know if any of this blocks that or if there would be any changes.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Brian talk a little bit about the snow removal.
Yes, so regarding the snow removal, there is a snow removal plan that has been approved and in place. We have taken that concept and integrated it into the revised plan and essentially it's located outside the wetland jurisdictional areas and snow will be, snow will be stored at the lower ends of the parking rows as those are the ones that are least occupied during the winter months.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, it seemed like it would just need to be amended, so that's all, you did that? Great.
I actually have a question. Is there any net new loading docks?
Net new? No. What we will be doing is reconfiguring a pair, one back to back loading dock. And what I mean by that is, is as part of the Kohl's, the existing Kohl's, this appendage right here is angled. Right now it's more of a box look under the existing condition. So one of the box look, under this existing condition, it's more of a box look and parallel. So we're proposing to redesign this and have it a little bit, with a slight angle to it such that trucks have an easier time entering and exiting, backing in and back and pulling out of, of the loading dock facilities. And again, being a supermarket with the various products coming in, the additional loading base for the individual uses was needed to, to accommodate the increase in size.
We'll get, we'll get the comments. How much of the construction is exterior versus interior? So what are you doing exterior wise and versus interior wise?
As far, on the building side or on the site side?
On the build, on the buildings, on the building. Yeah, not the site, the buildings.
Okay. I can let Jim speak to most of that?
Jim Lamp again. We're peeling back, so the, the front of the facade of the proposed Market Basket, now Kohl's will be completely stripped and redone, the elevation shown behind you, as well as the front of the existing market will be pulled back quite a distance. I think right now, if you look at the proposed plan, the existing front of the market is probably 15 feet into the proposed drive aisle. So it's being peeled back 25, 30 feet. That's where the, the loss in square footage is. We're proposing a completely new facade for the Kohl's, the Market Basket and the additional retail space. And we're studying the rest of the center, but right now I just want to say the facade is, is planned to be basically the existing market, the existing Kohl's, all redone.
Any work on the roofs?
Where needed, yeah. There, there will be new units being placed on the roof, so it'll probably be a new membrane on, on at least the Market Basket where the Kohl's is, but I, I don't have that, that complete answer for you.
That's okay. And do you guys, do you guys use, I don't think there's any solar up there now. Is that something that you've considered?
No, there is not. And on the new stores, what we do is we, we make the roofs solar ready, but that would, on this, we have to deal with the steel that's there. So it probably will not be solar ready on this one.
So one question to the construction process. You mentioned that, okay, Kohl's will move out, then you'll reconstruct that space for Market Basket and how, what impact will that have on the rest of the property during the construction phase of both of them? Or is it all interior or how are you going to manage that?
It's, it's going to be a two-year period at least. What will happen is Kohl's will vacate this spring. You know, God willing, we get the permits and we start setting up the Market Basket. It will take about 12 to 14 months to do the Market Basket. And then at that point, we vacate the Market Space and we start renovating the Kohl's. So Kohl's will start being renovated in 2025 and that will take, say, 10 months for the Kohl's. So we would hope that everything would be wrapped up at the end of '25.
So what impact will that have on the exterior, the traffic, those sorts of things?
We do this actually quite a bit. We're doing something very, very similar with our plaza in Bill Ricka. We just redid an expansion project in Danvers. Bill Rick is planning on about 12 phases for the parking lot, the rear is only, everything here is going to be, all the pavement, all the curbing, back and front is all going to be new. All curbing is being proposed as vertical granite, so it's an upgrade of what there is today. We're, we're planning on bowmaggie, which would be reclaiming the pavement, mixing it in with the gravels underneath and resetting. it in with the gravels underneath, and resetting the, the subgrade gravels, and then repaving the entire surface. I don't think this is going to be much different, this is probably going to be, you know, ten-plus phases of, of repaving, and, and, you know, obviously, Market Basket, being the owner, is going to be very wary of, of interrupting access for our patrons, so we'll be working around that. And, and probably what will happen is, if you go back to the original proposal, is we'll try to do bays in between those linear islands, either in one or two phases, and then shifting over, getting down binder everywhere prior to final paving. So the, the plan that's on the, the wall behind you, you know, probably two bays, three bays at a time, getting down the gravel. We'll have stripes on the gravel if needed for parking, but, you know, carts don't work on gravel, so we'll get those paved, at least with the binder course, as quickly as possible. And they, they've gotten very, very good at this, we have a few contractors that we use on all these projects.
What's the, are there proposed changes to the interior? What's going to be different, I guess, in the new Market Basket section? Is it going to be same as the other store? I mean, I know some of the newer...
Our new stores, this will have a Markets Cafe, which is, you know, the coffee service, prepared foods, you can sit down and eat, there's usually twenty or thirty seats for, for patrons to sit down. It will have the, the butcher shop, it will have a, a brand-new bakery, you know, a lot of prepared foods on-site. I guess the best I could recommend would be is if you visit the new store that's out on Pawtucket Boulevard in Lowell. The landscaping is, was done by VHB, very similar, it's got the same, you know, wide linear islands, and that's a full-service store, it has all, all the accoutrement.
Okay, good to know, okay.
Moving on from the traffic side and focusing more on the parking side of the discussion, we, we also wanted to make sure that there was adequate parking on the site. As, as Brian mentioned, the existing parking that exists out there today is about a thousand eleven spaces. The proposal here is to bring that to about nine hundred and nine spaces on the site, which is obviously a reduction of about a hundred spaces in total. As part of that, we wanted to make sure that that was adequate, that would be able to support the project, and make sure that it was, it certainly was doable for, for their operations as well as the rest of the shopping center. Your zoning would require about eleven hundred fifty-three spaces out there, which is obviously well in excess of what we're looking to do out here. It is part of that, so we ended up taking a look at some of the industry standards and doing some observations out there as well. ITE, which provides information on parking generation, in addition to traffic generation for these types of projects, recommends for a shopping center like this that, you know, you can, you can look at about two and a half spaces, two-point-four-four spaces for every thousand square feet out there, which, which brings you to do a total of about five hundred and fifty-four parking spaces. That would be, you know, the average number of spaces that would be occupied during the course of the year. The Urban Land Institute, also, we took a look at, they are a little bit more conservative in how they look at things and make sure that they take in some seasonality in how, how parking happens out here. They're angling more towards four spaces, they're suggesting four spaces for every thousand, which gets you to nine hundred and seven spaces. You may find a coincidence that we're proposing nine hundred and eight spaces out here, really just to meet that demand and, and, you know, exceed it just, just by a little bit out here. Our observations out there during October were done during the weeknights and on weekends as well, just to confirm that our, our parking numbers out here are consistent with what, what we think will be needed out here. Again, the parking observations we saw were about two and a quarter spaces for every thousand square feet that's occupied on the site. At full demand, you're probably looking at about five hundred and ten spaces during those periods of time that we did our observations out there, so, you know, leaves about four hundred spaces in excess of what we saw out there in October. When you consider that there is some seasonality, there is some Thanksgiving holiday shopping that sometimes happens with centers like this, we've, we've, we believe the four hundred extra spaces really is more than enough to, to meet that buffer during that seasonality, and that's supported by some of the industry research that we've done out here. So part of this request is to seek a waiver or variance or a, the special permit for parking, and that's sort of the justification that we wanted to provide you, so if you have any questions on that, I'm more than happy to get it in.
I mean, I instinctively believe you're right, just from observation of being there so often, but let's just say hypothetically speaking, if it turned out there was, you know, it was consistently close to the limit, do you have, is any of the space on the north side there sort of bankable, or is it in the floodplain that you couldn't use it? I mean, that's one of the ways we get around it, is that we, we say, oh, look, if worse comes to worse, you could add another fifty or a hundred over here.
My, my guess, and I'll let Brian answer the question, my guess is, given the environmental constraints that are around the site, doing that might not necessarily be in, in the best interest of the, the project, but Brian might want to step in.
Yeah, regarding land banking parking spaces, right now, the developed area is kind of maxed out, because on the north end, we're right, we're within ten to fifteen feet of a bordering vegetated wetland, and, and today's rules, regulations, we're not allowed to impact said regulations, so there is no opportunity to provide additional bank parking spaces along that area. And that also holds true for the south end. Again, this, this dark green that you're seeing, the contrast, this is all wetland-related air, wetland-related area, so we need to work around.
Do you guys ever consider, I mean, I don't really see it with many Market Baskets, I can't, I'm not even sure I can think of any, do you ever consider underground parking under the buildings?
No.
I've never seen it, so I assume not, but I was just...
One, yeah, structural, structural parking underneath our stores, which you'll see when, when construction starts, is just chock-full of utilities, so anything underneath the store is, is really almost impossible. We've never done a store like that, we've looked at, at urban stores, like in the, in the Boston area, and still haven't figured out how to, how to make that work. If I can just add a, a little bit, based on, I've been working exclusively for Market Basket for about fifteen years, on and off for over, over thirty-five. Market Basket doesn't want to cut off their nose and spite their face on this one, they are the, by far, the highest user. If we do a store standalone, we like between five and six spaces per thousand, but once you add it into a larger center like this, usually the, the other tenants are closer to a three-per-thousand parking rate. And what we did on this is, we tried to thread the needle, is that we thought, and talking to the town and dealing with the town over the years, is that the, the value of, of over an acre, or acre and a quarter of additional open space was, was more important than having those spaces, and, and we don't think, we actually feel very strongly that, that there's more than enough spaces. We actually have many of the schools in the area, the colleges, will lease space, not lease space, but they will, we will allow them to park on graduation weekends, other special events, and bus people, so we give up three spaces, three hundred spaces plus sometimes, and have them bus people over, over weekends, so we feel very, very comfortable that the nine hundred-plus spaces being proposed here will be adequate for the, for the parking. The other thing that happens here is where the old market is, you'll note that the spaces are not as deep, or the, the parking trays are not as deep away from the store, now the Market Basket is at the deepest part of the site, so the, the parking available to the highest user, which is Market Basket, is, is much more available to the two doors, which is one center right in the middle of those four bays, and then on the right-hand side, looking at it, so door here, door here for our store, so that there's no spillover, really, we don't anticipate any parking for Market Basket to use the coal space, which would be our second highest user.
What, and the new retail, the new vacant space, do we have an idea of what that would, what kind of stores that would be?
Dry goods, at this point, we don't have a tenant lined up for that space.
Yeah, because the only thing, I mean, right now, with the, you've got restaurants on either end, those are busy, you know, only certain times a day, Laundies is, is, is more takeout and to-go, so you don't really have concerns there. If it was another restaurant, I might have, you know, more concern, especially for the sit-down place where people going for a period of time, but the, most of the stores now, the bookstore, the salons, there's not a lot of traffic, and it's not a lot of be-there-for-a-long-time traffic, it's in and out, so the mixes are good, so it's...
So, just a quick question, so is the carriage corrals proposed on this plan, or is there? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Can you just point them out for me?
Yeah, there is a series of cock corrals, they're essentially located part of the Market Basket, they're about ten to fifteen spaces down.
Okay.
And just these trays.
Got it.
Okay. All right, let's keep going.
That concludes traffic and parking, I'll hand it back to Brian to talk a little bit about what's, what we're looking for here.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, and I don't think we need a lot about, I mean, we've obviously reviewed the application, I don't think we need a lot about the actual specific permits that you're looking for.
If, if you'd like, I, that was just, I was just going to go in and quickly review the permits, if you don't, we can bypass that and...
You know, I think we got it in the presentation, and I think we, Gene fills us in, and we can write it up based on what you got. Okay.
Okay. So with that, I just, we'll, we'll close by saying that, just to update this board, at the request of both Gene and Amy from Conservation, a coordinated peer review is currently being undertaken by Horsley Witten, the town's peer review consultant, to review the project. We did receive in late this afternoon, a comment letter from them, I've had the chance to review the comments, in my opinion, the comments are very minor in nature, I believe that we can adequately address all the comments to the satisfaction of Horsley Witten over the next week or two, and then resubmit revised plans at that, at that time for, for the board's review.
Okay, so now we're going to take any public comment, if there's any public comment, or if any comment has come in via email, then if there are any additional board comments or questions, we'll do that. Gene, do we have any email questions or comments?
Not.
Okay, any members?
I'm waiting for fire to pop, it's final sign-off as well.
Okay. Any public comments, sir, come on, come up to the microphone, just tell us your name and where you live, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I hope you, everyone sleep well today. You guys too. My name is Gennady Etchen.
Okay, where do you live, sir?
I live at six twenty-nine Waverly Road.
Oh, Waverly, okay, yeah.
And I pay taxes there.
Good.
Own that apartment.
That's good.
I'm in the property. I lived there since nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay.
For twenty-five years. So it's a great presentation, guys. By the way, can I use your...
Please do, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So it's a great presentation. Very nice improvements we see here, right? I'm for that. This is a current state of the art. This is a property I'm living in. Anything happened on this property, Market Basket property, impact me directly, in my judgment. This is a fifty-three feet over here, fifty-four, sorry, fifty-four point three, from this corner to this corner. If you take the fifty-three footer truck, it will not fit there. Over here, just for you guys to repeat, from this corner to this corner. Fifty-four feet, fifty-four point three. Right now, here, this is a docking area here, this is a docking area for Market Basket, the trucks coming from this direction, going next to my house, going there, doing U-turns, doing the reverse with beeps, and that's all done during the night, because they have to unload the stuff which Market Basket has to sell, the great people of the town of North and Dover. It's great, but I'd like to ask you guys who represent this project and property, how are you going to protect residential area over here? In nineteen ninety-eight, this board, or maybe not this board, probably this board, made a decision that loading will not happen between nine P M. and seven A M. during the night. Somebody could say it's a century ago, yes it is, but it's still in our lifetime. During those twenty-five years, except maybe the last three, you know, maybe a few, few weeks, since we received this presentation or notice about these changes, we have sleepless night almost every day. We called police, we called health department, and everybody's saying, no, 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 call police, we called the police, police will come, maybe twenty minutes, maybe thirty minutes, maybe four, hour late, because they have to dispatch the patrol car. By that time, the trucker is gone, or they shut down the engine, or they already parked, and they're unloading.
What, and what time are you experiencing that?
It happened eleven, midnight, at six, at five, at four, at three, and anything between.
And can I ask, is there any tree buffer or fence buffer, because I know there are some woods back there, is there anything between where your house is and the...
This is a very thin area over here, there is no trees, I have a property here, and this is the trees we have here, we put trees over here, there is a old trees, there is a line between this property and this property, the pines, the very tall pines. During the winter, it's pretty much, you can see right through, during the, you know, spring and summer, it is covered with green, but I can see roof of this building like a lake, because it's...
And you're, you're up above, right?
Yes, it is, it is above area. It's elevation, I would say probably twenty, thirty feet, maybe, something like that.
Okay.
Not, not more than that.
Can I ask you, so you guys must experience this frequently with neighborhoods, is there anything that Market Basket kind of typically does to assist with noise buffering, is there, do you, I mean, this can't be the first time that you've heard this complaint here or elsewhere, so what are, what are some things that you guys do to, to help with that?
The docks that are on the center, we go to the other board, our new, our new buildings, we cover the docks when we can, so the two docks on either side will have a cover for about fifty-five, fifty feet away from the dock face itself.
But when the car...
Hold on, hold on, I can only have numbers at this time, all right, go ahead.
And, and we're looking at trying to, especially on the one facing towards this gentleman's property, we're looking at trying to do some sound abatement inside that structure on the, the one dock facing that. The dock that is on the far-right side, which is a dairy dock, so that's typically just Market Basket trucks, usually early in the morning, and, you know, if there's a seven to nine, I will make sure that they're aware that there's a seven to nine, or nine P M. to seven A M. restriction, and I'll make sure that operations is aware of that.
For twenty-five years, it's nothing.
Well, so, this is going to be, so, here's the thing, this is going to be, this is a new permit application, and like I said, it, very solid presentation, looks like they're making a lot of improvements. One of the things that there will be is we have the opportunity to review those, they're asking for some assistance from the board in reducing the parking, some reasonable requests, but I think we can, we also have the opportunity to make reasonable requests and conditions as part of this, so I think looking into what the times are, as well as what can be done in terms of sound, I think, I think will be part of our discussions if there can be things done to, in, within the dock, that would be helpful, and if you could provide some more information about what's proposed or what you can do, so that we might be able to include that as a part of a condition, I think that would be helpful for these gentlemen.
The, the other thing that we are doing on that dairy dock that we, we believe, the setback from residential, we're already, the building is within the required setback, so the, the, where the dairy dock is, that dock on the far-right, when you're looking at the plan, we can't put a roof over that, or we'd be in violation of zoning, but we can, we can do a screen wall there, and we're looking at a solid wall to, you know, that would go up to the height of the, the actual building, to keep the noise from emanating out towards the rear.
Correct.
But we can't put a roof on that one, the other two docks... The other two docks will have, will have full roofs and, and we're looking at hanging some, some, you know, material from that roof. We actually have a sound engineer looking at it right now.
Okay, is that some information that you could bring back to us about what he says?
Sure, sure. We've already had the, the ambient sound taken care of.
Yeah.
So they've, they've had the monitors out there right before the last big snowstorm. And I have not heard back from them, what they, they've gotten back, but they wanted to get the background noise first.
Yeah.
And then look at that, what the proposed noise will do and what we can do to mitigate it.
Okay.
We were, we were aware that, you know, that you, you folks live relatively close to the loading area.
It's not relative, we shared all the time.
We wanna do what we, we can to, to try to mitigate that noise.
Now's, now's the opportunity, right? You don't take many chances to do this, so now would be the opportunity. One of the things we've done in, in similar, similar special permits is we've put in conditions of this, of the noise screening and then asked them to come back once it's all built to show us that, that that's being complied with, that it's actually working. Can't do it while, you know, while they're building, we don't know, you know, until it's actually built and then until the deliveries are actually coming. So we can work those kind of things into the conditions. We just need some impact input back about what's actually planned and how we can incorporate that. So, your concerns are heard. We're not deciding anything today. They're gonna come back, we're, there's still more work to do on other aspects, but we'll get some more information back from them at either the next hearing or at a subsequent hearing about what kind of, what they can do to assist in, in that and then how we can put that into a, conditions of our permit that we grant.
Couple more comments.
Yeah.
Sleep and rest is very important. You, you guys understand this, and I'm happy to hear that. The also, sleep impact how I perform and everybody else performs next day. And I'm responsible for some team that I have to manage, and my performance has to be at the top level all the time. That is what my employer, employer expect from me. The second part addressed to, to these guys. You talk about a lot of about front. You said nothing about back. We just hear, heard a little bit about your, what you're doing with the sound and covering of this dock, but nothing how the traffic from here will go there. And remember, this is a Market Basket trucks, right? They're 53 footers. They come in and go, you know, very often. So we, we need to understand how this traffic will go there because you're not exiting over here, there is a bank. It's prohibited to pass through the bank, so they coming in, they have to turn around and go back. And when they dock, they have to back up. And it's a beep, beep, beep in the morning. When you wake up at 5:00 in the morning, you will not fall asleep until 6:00, when you have to get up anyway. So this is my comments. I have my son over here, he has something to say as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Address that briefly? The truck movements will be the same. The trucks get back there, they, they come around. We've looked at an area right here, there's 120-foot spin circle, so trucks are able to, to get in, turn, change direction. Market Basket trucks do not have a beeper. So the problems that we've got are with our vendors' trucks and, and we, we can't dictate what they do because of liability and whatnot, but, you know, that's like the Coke, the Pepsi's, the bread trucks, things like that that have the beepers.
But we can, I mean, if it are...
We can address delivery times and things like that, and I just have to remind them. Sometimes with, you know, 94 stores, things get lost in the shuffle. But I'll, I'll reinvigorate that effort to make sure that people are aware that trucks can't be there at the, you know, off times between 9:00 and 7:00 AM.
Yeah, maybe a sign? Okay.
Hi, my name's Eli Etchen. Also live at 629 Waverly Road. Just a quick follow-up on that. I think our concern with this right here is because trucks are coming in one way, they're gonna have a real hard time backing into some of these bays. Since it's one way, it's easy to back into here. They're gonna have to do multiple point turns to back into this one. I think that's the concern. As far as the noise reduction, what we'd really like is a sound wall, sound barrier wall, similar to highways. As he mentioned, they keep refrigerated trucks or refrigerated trailers at their docks. Those hum all day. They're refrigerated, they're meant to run all day when the power goes out. The whole back lot is filled with these refrigerated trailers, so they can preserve their product. And everything's buzzing, constant vibration. So that's really the main concern about them moving, moving closer to homes. And not for nothing, but these homes right here have been complaining about the disturbances from their property for 30 years or so, and it hasn't been fixed. I've spent the last five or six years dealing with the health department and the building department on this. I've spoken to the old town manager, Selectman DeCollegiero, six years ago. Had three main concerns. One was their nighttime operations, 'cause it is genuinely very hard to sleep when a tractor trailer comes through. Right here is, one, this is a choke point, so when these trucks are gonna be over here, right now, trucks go over here, when they're waiting in queue, they're right here along Coles. When they're bays right here, the trucks are gonna be waiting right here, right outside our homes. Their trucks idle, many of their trucks, not all of them. I've been working with the DEP as well to get the idling down. Their trucks idle while they're in queue. So they're gonna be idling the entire time they're waiting outside of all of our homes here. That's why I'm asking for a sound wall running along here, to block out the noise and the vibration. Currently, this past year, a typical night, they had some service truck that comes by between 11:00 and midnight, does three laps around the building, and then does figure eights around the back lot. I don't know if he's measuring something. It looks like a sander, de-icing machine, extremely loud. Two hours later, usually around between 1:00 and 2:30, Country Kitchen Bread Guy comes. He has a very loud, and you can feel how heavy his truck is. He shows up daily. And now with Lundie's there, their delivery guy also shows up in the middle of the night. He woke me up Friday at 2:00 in the morning, loud bang, looked out my window, there he is. The trash pickups have been horrendous over the years. I have paperwork from the 90s where everybody on my street was complaining about it. I have paperwork from the police department where they actually did police things to catch their drivers, to catch them picking up dumpsters at in the morning. This year, we've had a lot of problems with Lundie's trash pickups, 3, 4, 5 in the morning. I got a lot of help with that from Stephen Casey of the health department and Janine Pierce, I believe her name is. They've been extremely helpful. Coles got their dumpsters picked up, 5:30, and then they, for two weeks, they started getting theirs at 6:something. Just last week, somebody, I don't know which store they belong to, they dumped a, they dumped a, they dropped off a dumpster right out, right over here at 6:15 in the morning. So I think my issue is this property is an extreme nuisance. Their operations are very disturbing, especially at night. They've done nothing, nothing, and these plans show that they're gonna mitigate the noise. And I did like what I heard, it sounds like they may make an effort. But we've been dealing with this for 25 years, so I don't have too much faith in what they have to say. We are relying on the town to protect us at this point. The special conditions that were given to them in 98 were definitely not followed. Their construction in 1998, when they built this expansion here, they operated their construction throughout the entire night. They, if you guys find them, they ate those fines and kept them moving. We would call the police on them, they would shut the noise down for 20 minutes. Police left, they'd start back up. We'd call again, and we were, we were chasing them around like that, and it lasted months. You asked for what times they're delivering and whatnot.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago, when I was gonna take them to the court, I started keeping a log. Would you like to look at it?
So I, I'm, I definitely hear your concerns, understand them. I'm more, I mean, 98th obviously too far back, even a couple, I'm more concerned about now and going forward. So we don't, we can't address anything that's happened in the past.
The only reason I bring up the past is because the same exact issues that were there 25, 30 years ago are still present today.
Okay, so that point is well made, understood. I think we have this opportunity now to listen to their application, to see the good points, to see the parts that may need adjustment, to listen to your input and to see if we can craft something that works well for everyone. I can't guarantee it, but I think that's a good opportunity. Go ahead.
What I'm hearing here is just a caution from the residents that our predecessors did provide conditions, and they're telling us they didn't work.
Yeah.
So what I hear you saying, Eitan, is that we, we need to take this input, we've asked the applicant to provide us information on what they're going to do so that we can carefully craft our conditions to perform better than the last time.
That would be amazing.
So I think we understand the challenge. We have asked the applicant to help us so that we can craft conditions that work both for them and for the residents, and that's our challenge.
Right, and then there are tools that we have used in other cases more recently in the last couple of years that I think we can use here to, that, like, ways to put in permits, follow-up, right? So one of the biggest things that happens is that, and, and that we've been trying to work to, to mitigate is that permits are, we go through this whole process, all this information, people come up with ideas, complaints, positives. We write a permit, and then it's just filed, and then there's no follow-up. So what we've been doing recently is trying to put follow-ups in, like designated follow-ups into our permits so that people have to come back and report to us and give us information so that there's designated times. It's not just based on complaints, but there's actual follow-up built in. So that's something that we may look to do here because that has been helpful in making sure that there was follow-through in what's been required and promised. So...
That would be wonderful.
Okay, so, nothing's gonna get decided today? Is there anything else that you guys want to add for, you can have a seat, sir. Is there anything else that you guys wanna add for today?
Question to us? We give to him, sir.
Hey, the only thing that, that I would suggest is, I, I think the vertical distance is probably 40-plus feet. And I think that as you get away from the docks, the effectiveness of a wall, you know, at the bottom of the hill, I, I think the more we can do at the trucks right there with that screen wall, as well as, as the, the cover, the covered roof with, with hang, hanging sound, you know, absorption panels is, is probably the best thing.
Is that something you could ask your acoustic guy to just give us some information about?
That's what they're gonna, they're gonna design for us, is hopefully to do that. The other thing that we're doing on this is that typically our compactors have, their motors are exterior. We're gonna put them interior. We, we had a situation in Maynard, Massachusetts where we had residents even closer than this, and there was not an existing use that had been there for 60, 70 years. This is a new store and a new location right next to residents that were there. And we brought those, those motors for the compactors into the building to reduce the sound, and we're proposing to do that here.
Okay.
So we're gonna make every effort to, to try to address the problems. You know, we don't wanna have neighbors that are, that are unhappy, and we'll, we'll try to address the board's comments.
So just one possible area of, I'm, I'm not sure we're aligned. It's great to hear that you have a sound engineer already working on this, and you've made that clear to us. But I think the point we're trying to make in response to that is, can you have your sound engineer present to the board what the mitigations are that you're planning?
Absolutely.
And also, I mean, I would like to ask them, or if you could ask them. I tend to agree with you that, I'm not, again, I'm not an engineer, but the idea of a wall is intuitively makes sense, but with the height, I don't know that it would have much impact. But again, I'm not a sound engineer, so they could kind of give us some information about. And that doesn't bind you to doing one thing one way or the other. But tell us, if there was a wall there, would it help, would it not help, that kind of stuff? I, I mean, it would be nice to hear from someone who has expertise in that.
Absolutely, we can, we can schedule that for the next year.
Okay, okay.
And I will fill them in on, on, you know, what I've just heard.
Okay.
With respect to the topic of a wall, the thing that I'll be thinking of is the sections of the highway where the landscape rises from the highway, and at the top of the rise, there are houses. And sections of the highway where walls have been built with that type of topography, which is very similar to this. And just off the top of my head, one example of that is on 93 northbound lanes in the general vicinity of London Dairy, but I may not be exact there, but in that general vicinity, the land rises and there's construction of sound walls mimicking this topography. So again, that's not what I do, although I was trained as an engineer. But it's an ocean engineer, so that's a civil with wet feet. So a little different than here. But that's what I'll be thinking about when your sound engineer presents and helps us understand with real expertise
Yeah.
what the most viable options might be.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so what's, we're gonna...
I just have one last quick comment on that.
All right, go ahead, go ahead. But this is gonna be the last comment, 'cause we gotta, we have some other things we gotta get to.
During the winter, they build walls made out of snow right outside our houses, and it seems to work really well, dampening the noise and especially the vibration, so.
Snow wall, snow walls it is. Okay, all right. Igloo style, okay, all right. So when should we continue to? Is the next meeting enough time? Do we need more time?
I think it's enough time for certainly the fire department and probably stormwater, but whether you can get another expertise, expert here to talk about sound.
But I, I can get them here, the only, so say it takes a week or so for us to get our comments to the peer review. I would think that the board would wanna have the peer review saying that we've addressed their concerns, but then is a week typically okay for them, or will they need more time?
If it's that final phase and there weren't anything that I don't think you can address for the next meeting. So the next meeting's February 6.
Yeah, we have three weeks, so...
Three weeks, oh, okay, not two, three?
Yeah. So let's do, so let's continue to February 6. If for some reason there's not enough that need, that can be done, then we'll go to the next meeting. But for now, we'll continue until February 6.
We can work with, with Jean and the table if we need to.
Okay, thank you very much for the thorough presentation. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, continued until February 6. All right, let's do 20, potential zoning bylaw amendment articles? Yeah, that's what we're up to, okay. Yeah, potential zoning bylaw amendment articles, discussion.
So my article that I'm aware of currently is the MBTA multifamily housing overlay district. As we discussed at the last meeting, the red line edits that you discussed at the last meeting were incorporated, and that draft has been sent to the state for pre, pre-application approval process. They have 90 days to do that.
Okay.
However, there is a resident here tonight that would like to discuss with the board a potential warrant article as well.
Okay, so anything?
I have involvement with this, so I need to recuse myself.
Okay. All right, uh...
So James Warden is here?
Right. All right, go ahead. What, I told...
Jean, can you put that on?
Hi, James Warden, 84 Academy Road, town resident, with Peter Boynton here, and we're...
Peter Boynton, 320 Stevens.
Representing the Kittredge family, but also a Warden Marine. And we have a very, very small thing compared to what we just heard about, 900 cars and giant commerce. We've looked at trying to make use of the Kitt... use of the Kittredge cow barn, which is the barn to the right, the very right side of the picture with the red bubble around it there. Yeah, thank you, Jean. And fifty-six Academy Road is that whole thirty-three acre property. But that low-carb cow barn that has been used for thirty years by Dana Adam as a contractor's yard has been vacated about one year ago, losing, you know, basically the biggest tenant of the Kittredge farm. And knowing Nan Stockdale and Sid Stockdale and some other family members, we've grown close to them after over the last stop, wherever nineteen ninety-seven we moved next door, we're just to the right of these pictures. And they dream of having a very light use in this bucolic setting that would be very low-impact and obviously, you know, it's currently zoned with residential R-three, whatever. But basically, we're proposing to store and do some tinkering and upfitting from time to time of small solar-powered boats inside that cow barn, always and only within the four walls. That's, I know it's funny.
No, just 'cause it, just Peter's ongoing crusade for solar boats, that's why.
Oh, the other crusader.
Yeah, that's, that's why.
Well, you know.
He's the solar guy, I'm the boat guy.
Okay, that's where we go, okay.
Floating together. So this is, as Nan Kittredge calls it, the solar flea genesis at Kittredge Farm, that's her little thing. But anyway, so obviously this is bordering on a very light, kind of a super lightweight commercial use. But we're, you know, we're proposing storage and very light tinkering from time to time within those four walls with a couple of cars parked there maybe at the face of it as opposed to the huge sprawling contractor yard that's more at the left and almost gone at the right. That's this summer and this is two, three years ago.
How is the contractor yard permitted or was it grandfathered?
I don't remember how it is. He was there for twenty years, I'd say.
Twenty, yeah, almost thirty. What we saw...
So it was non-conforming use, right?
That's what I'm assuming.
Yeah, I mean, there's a certain amount of diminished uses, nobody's ever gonna notice or see. It's not obnoxious, yeah.
So you're, you're thinking about doing a zoning change to allow for this light industrial use?
Well, here's what we're, we're wondering what's possible. We've looked around and worked through the different folks at the town, talking, talking about things and kind of come to a stuck position of, you know, when you read things just, you know, face value, you know, right now it's officially R-three. We wanna kind of continue a tiny, tiny subset of what was there that's very well-defined and we can well-defined that, you know, to have that possibility. And we're asking if the planning board has any ideas how we might look at this. We're kind of out of time. The first hull is coming down late February and we need to land somewhere. If we can't figure something out, we're gonna be going to the Haverhill Mayor's office and finding some little crummy industrial building somewhere.
So originally what we were looking at and wondering about was under the abandonment for non-conforming use is a two-year period of time where it could potentially be resumed. The former contractor's yard that had a huge landscape business has been gone for one year. So from our perspective, that term contractor's yard, even though this is boats, not landscaping, in terms of what used to happen inside that barn, it was working on vehicles. And this use would be the same, working on vehicles, they're boats instead of landscaping trucks. And it would be a much lower impact, there'd be none of that stuff that you see there outside, there'd be no noise, no smoke, no smells. We're not manufacturing boats, we're basically outfitting them once they've been manufactured. It'd be very low-impact.
Well, wouldn't that just be a determination by the building inspector if there was an issue?
It has not, it has not worked out.
Okay.
And so, with that path not being viable. And we have made multiple attempts. And as of this weekend, we're gonna have to start shopping for warehouses in Haverhill and we can do that. And that'll work. It was a very elegant solution using this space and given that we're both, you know, I think good citizens of the town, there was also a thought here that we could be helpful because I think in terms of preserving that Kittredge space, that family has lost a thirty-year revenue source. And we could be a revenue source that helps them, but right now we can't get there and we're wondering if the planning board has any ideas for us.
Any issues with, any issues with the neighbors? Would any of the neighbors have any issues with this?
I would, I would assume I could get a great letter of support from all the neighbors.
I mean, it seems to me that it would just be a zoning change, but with very, very specific criteria. Like you wouldn't open it up to just any light industrial, you would really specify kind of light industrial with a maximum of this amount of space and this amount of employees and this. I think you could do it that, I think you could do it that way.
The problem you run into is that it's in an R-three district. And most properties in the R-three district are one-half acre to one acre. This is much bigger. You could do it here and nobody would ever notice, which is, you know, sort of, it's, it's almost a shame that it got on the radar screen. But the problem is, you probably, you could make it an argument, I mean, again, I know being a little bit, I'm thinking out loud here, is that you really want this use to be applicable to anybody or to half-acre lot? That's, that's the problem.
Oh, no, I was, I was saying spot zone it with like an overlay or something like that, I was saying...
Well, if you wanted to do something like that, you might be able to get away with it.
No, 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 I'm saying spot zone this, I mean, I hate saying the term spot zone because you're not allowed to spot zone, but I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying this is a unique property with a unique idea and a unique size in R-three. So just like we've, like we did with the market at, that we turned into the Fie family or the, on Middlesex. Or there have been properties, or some of the ones on one-fourteen.
So Al McGregor's property, it had to be comprised of at least six acres of land and the nearest residential house couldn't be closer than four hundred feet.
Okay, yeah, if you wanted to do something like that, make it a really large size...
Yeah, thirty-three acres.
Right, I'm saying, Chad, I'm saying we make it unique, we've done that in the past with parcels that what was happening was not quite fair and there was a great idea, but we didn't wanna open it up to everything. And so, but what you need is neighborhood support, that it's not gonna be a problem. You need information that this is what exactly it's going to be and then I think you can tailor it that way because I don't see how this is objectionable to anybody if it's at this...
And if I, if I understand correctly, the proposed use would sunset in like two years, right?
One more year.
One, one year, we're talking, so.
Why is that?
I mean, it's, well, the, the old users...
I think you're talking about two different things.
So that's only if you use the abandonment then, or otherwise you can...
No, I'm talking, so you, you talked about a prototype vote and then the final vote.
Yeah, but the use could go more than two years for tinkering, but once it gets into large-scale manufacturing, I don't think it would be there.
Yeah, we'd need a manufacturing facility, right. This is a little...
You could put in a sunset clause anyway and then have to come back if it went beyond a certain, you know, said in five years or whatever, you could sunset it.
Yeah, it could be five.
You have to have a very, very narrow...
We can make it as narrow, I mean, we're, we don't want, Nan Kittredge doesn't want anything outside the four walls, so that, that restricts it. And then, you know, no, no chemicals, no smells, no welding, no...
No noise.
No noise, no fumes.
Right, well, right, there's two, but then to...
No trailers parked outside.
But to Sean's point, there's two types of restrictions, restrictions of what's actually happening here and then restricting the zoning so that it only really applies to this...
Because if we zone a thirty-three acre parcel, right, and it's not like super narrow, then you just opened up a thirty-three acre parcel in the future, right? You know, so...
For that particular structure that's on the thirty-three acre property.
Well, that's what I said.
Well, you could make it an accessory use sort of thing.
But you could also just do an overlay on this property.
Yeah. But like, what, like artisan studio or like, isn't there like something that's create like narrow?
Boat artisans.
More of an entrepreneur.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, no, yeah, but no, but artists, I mean, like...
Like an art, like, yeah.
It's kind of artisan. Boat artisan.
So we wanted to ask if you had any advice and I'm not quite sure, it sounds like there could be a path, but I'm not quite sure what next steps are.
Well, I think, I think if you wanted to go the, what I would suggest, if you wanted to go, again, and I, I'm just thinking out loud and Jean's input here would be great, I mean, if you wanted to go the way of trying to create a zoning district or overlay or either, so the ways to make it something that conforms with zoning are, one, change the zoning table to allow a type of use on a type of property so that you allow certain things on R-three. Or you can overlay a zone onto a particular area such as this area and allow for certain things with certain restrictions. I think that in my mind is probably the better, to just be upfront about we're doing it for this property rather than say we're doing it for all and, and make it so it's only this property, I'd say you just do it for this. But what I think you would need is, you would need some letters of support from, from neighbors and then you'd need an actual proposal of what that zoning would be and how it would be restricted.
Would this be a citizen's petition?
Yes.
You'd need two articles because you'd have to create the map article.
Correct. Yeah. So I think it starts...
Probably the best way to do it is, because then that gets around the concern that I had is because it makes it unique to the property. And if you dress it up in some sort of, you call it a historical preservation, something or other, you know, that gives it a certain cachet, but you very narrowly, I mean, I think between the two, you could probably define it as well as we can and Jeanie will help you, I'm sure, yeah.
And I think it starts off as a citizen petition and then you bring it to the board and if the board supports it, then we can, then we can take it on as a planning board-supported article. That's how we've done it.
Yeah, so just as far as doing a use change within R-three district, R-three is actually combined with R-one, two, and three. It's not as unique, like in the zoning bylaw, groups the three of them together, so that makes it much broader. So if we did an overlay, would you, would you think for Academy Road itself? I don't know how many other barns there are, I don't picture another barn on Academy Road.
You have a barn?
I have a big barn that's four hundred feet off the street, but the back...
So you and those are part of the two, right?
Brad has a barn.
Brad has a...
Oh, Brad does too, yeah.
So the barn district.
So the oval...
The preservation district, that's good.
You can't just put it on this property, but I would say if we put it on Academy Road, any one of those barns, I would think we want to...
I mean, to be honest, there are other, I mean, isn't there another location on Academy Road that they use for like music and like their concerts and stuff like that?
That's the common, that's the common or?
No, 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 a lot of it's...
Brad's barn.
Oh, Brad, yeah.
Yeah, he does, like Sid, the Sid thing and, yeah.
No, they're like, they have, they actually have a whole music program that I've seen that they advertise for and sell and stuff like that. So it sounds like people are...
The church itself has, yeah, the church has coffee...
Right.
Yeah, that's a church.
Okay, that's at the church, okay.
So, so in overlay, Academy Road, barn district, and the twist here is that it is a potential revenue source to allow those property owners to maintain historic structures.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think, the sell, that's good.
I mean, and as long as it doesn't, should it be a, should it be a special permit?
Yes.
Yeah, so make it a special permit and it can't, that way can't have, it can't, you know, create nuisance or large amounts of parking and things like that. So if you made it a special permit and allowed for all, yeah, 'cause I mean, I could say you could have a barn, you could have an artist's studio in one of those barns. I actually think that would be a really cool kinda thing.
It'd be cool, yeah.
You know, or, you know, they could make... Yeah, or maple sugar, whatever, maple, whatever. Right, see, see?
Yeah, every, Brad does maple sugar.
Yeah, right. So, but I'm saying if you wanted to do that as a small retail thing or as, you know, or as an educational thing or whatever. Well, that's the other point, you could make it educational and put it under Dover.
Does this fall in the old center jurisdiction too?
Oh, that's a good question. Is this under the old center historical?
What's that?
Is this under the old center historical?
District, yes, it's within that district.
But you're not changing the physical structure.
Okay, but maybe just wanna make sure that you don't run afoul of any rules or regulations there.
Yeah, we're just, well...
I don't know what, what...
We started this two months ago.
Yeah.
We're, you know, replacing all new, you know, replacing all the windows, replacing the doors, but all like how they are exactly.
But did you go to the district commission for that, to replace windows?
We were waiting to see if it's possible before we...
You may wanna look into it.
Okay, I thought you already started replacing windows.
No, no.
No, okay.
I started the planning to do it. Yeah, we got all the... The planning was that it would... We're gonna make what's there now, but just be functional.
So anything under their jurisdiction, you'd still need to go get that approval as well?
We went down to talk about pulling permits and that's how this kinda started to move along, like, you know, well, for pulling permits and, you know, what's the use and whatever.
So I think steps are to talk to the neighbors about the new potential barn district.
Barn district.
And, and then...
Historic barn district.
Historic barn district, historic barn district. There'll be historic barn district tours. I'll sign up my son to be the first historic barn district tour guide. And then, see, educational, Dover.
Trying to get the steps, that was one.
That's step one, and then come up with the kinda overlay criteria that we could do to make it a, to make it specific to kind of this area and how we can make it unique.
Just out of curiosity, you said, is it, it's boat storage or are you retrofitting boats for solar? What, what is the business, not like the marriage?
Brand-new boats that are being developed, so the hull comes down and it goes inside and it gets outfitted over a month or two, very slow meticulous work, a lot of checking and and won't be there all the time. And then the boat will be taken out, brought, put in the Merrimack, whatever, and tested.
And by the way, the, sort of the impetus for all this is working with MIVA. They have publicly put out that they're gonna have an RFP for solar ferry on the Merrimack River.
Multiple sources.
And we think that the historic Kittredge farm could be the birth of solar passenger vessels licensed by the Coast Guard operating on the Merrimack River, which after all was the location where the Coast Guard was born. So North Andover's kind of in a really neat position here to bring history forward with brand-new technology on the Merrimack River.
Are you there? All from the historic barn district.
Yes.
Powered by the...
Okay, powered by, okay. Did that help?
So that's step two.
Terrific, we may have a path.
Okay.
So that helps, but that leads us into the town meeting calendar, if you'll be of interest, so. Select Board will vote to open the warrant on January twenty-second.
All right, Peter, why don't you come back for this? All set?
So we would have to go to the Tribune with the draft legal, with the legal ad by February first.
Okay.
It would print on the February fifth and twelfth, where your public meeting would open on the twentieth. Now, that legal ad likely won't include the citizen petition, but that citizen petition would have to be submitted by March eleventh. That's the deadline for citizen petitions, we'd have to run a second ad if it runs this course. Select Board closes the warrant as soon as that citizen petition date comes, so March eleventh it'll close. And your first public hearing is the February twentieth, then March twelfth and March nineteenth.
So that's, you'll have to draft a citizen petition and get the, was it ten signatures, fifteen?
I think it's ten.
I think it's like ten signatures.
Just work with the clerk's office.
Yeah, exactly, work with the clerk's office. If whatever requires, try to get double, just to make sure.
Yeah, there has to be registered voters when we sign it.
Peter, any of these?
Okay. Let's save the established subcommittee for the next meeting. Can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December nineteenth?
So moved, second.
Geez, guys. All right, so we're gonna say that Peter made that motion and John seconded it. All in favor? Can we get a motion to adjourn? We get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Second, my Jeva, all in favor? Okay, adjourned, good.